Oh, I sure went on.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm gonna call to order the regular work session for the Sierra Vista City Council for June 8th, I believe. Make sure I'm on the right sheet here. And the first item of business today, of course, is to go over our June 10th council meeting. We'll do a roll call, invocation, pledge of allegiance, acceptance of the agenda, all standard things. And then we'll have the city manager's report. Chuck, is there anything you'd like to share with us today on the city manager's report?
Yeah, I'll have a few projects, Mr. Mayor, but of particular interest is there will be a JPA meeting. We'll go in over candidate for the new director over at the, at CCOM. So hopefully, we'll have some news on that by that night. And then Victoria and I will be attending the school board meeting next week with regards to the Roadrunner property as well.
Great. All right. Questions for the city manager on his brief report?
It'll be longer.
It'll be longer, yeah, it'll be longer on Thursday. Item, item two is the consent agenda. We have the approval of the special city council minutes for 27th May and the approval of the regular city council meeting minutes for the 21st. Any comments or concerns? Any that we need to share? Okay. Then we move on to new business. And we have the authorization, the IGA between Cochise College Sheriff's Office and, and the city. So if you would, Chief Thrasher, would you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a renewal of the IGA with Cochise College and the Cochise County Sheriff's Department regarding the academy that's operated at the Cochise College campus in Douglas. This IGA authorizes, authorizes, authorizes us to have SVP officer serve as a recruit training officer and receive reimbursement for overtime for that officer, as well as providing defensive tactics room, as well as driving track at the airport for the academy. It's the standard agreement. The only changes to it are the amount of overtime that is authorized as the academy will be extending by several weeks in 2022. We have to answer your questions.
We are getting, we are getting good quality product?
Yes, sir, we are.
Hate to speak about people's product, but...
Well, the product, the product is ours because it's us in the sheriff's office that do the majority instructing, so.
I got it. I just wanted, you know, you got the responsibility for quality control, so I just wanted to hear that's working.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, chief. Any questions for the, any other questions for the chief?
Does, Mr. Mayor, chief, does Kalia have anything to do with the training of our officers? Or any standards that we're working with with respect to that?
Not at the academy. It does have to do with in-service training. Kalia has some standards regarding certain different things that need to be done at in-service training once they're out of the academy. So, but not while they're in the academy. The academy is guided by Arizona Peace Officer Standards and Training Board, and they have a set curriculum with outlines that is taught the academy.
Okay. I wouldn't be surprised if Kalia didn't have a standard that says, says whoever you hire has to be a graduate of the Certified Police Academy.
Well, I, I'm not sure if they actually have that particular one, but that's a requirement by state law, so.
Either way, okay, gotcha. Okay. Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you very much. Thanks, chief. We next go on to item number four, annual equipment financing and emergency. And I'm assuming it's Mr. Felix since my notes doesn't say who's gonna brief it.
Mayor, members of council, this is our annual equipment financing. This year, we actually are only financing the two refuse trucks, and it has to do more with the cash flow in the refuse fund than any other reason. That does have a smaller cash balance. As you know, we just raised rates last year on the fund. So to keep the fund from going cash negative, we're doing the financing. We did actually get only one bid this year because of the relatively small financing. But we did get the bid at 1.32%, which doesn't even match the inflation rate. So if we would've known this, we might've financed a few more things at this rate because it's quite a deal. The, the reason for the emergency clause when you're doing every financing is they don't give a 30-day lock on the interest rate. So if you don't get it completed within 30 days, they have the, always will have the right to readjust the interest rates. And assuming it will never be in our favor, we always do the emergency clause to get it in within the 30-day window of and get it done by the end of the fiscal year. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And my understanding is that you need at least six votes to make this happen.
That is correct.
Anytime we, anytime we go, we, I don't want to say short fuse the financing, where it's less than 30 days, we have to have a super majority
Yes.
of the council to okay it.
Yes, and I did clarify with Jill, it is of the number of seats, even with the vacant seat, we still need six yes votes.
Yeah, I talked to him about that, too. Okay. Any questions for David? Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Felix. Appreciate it. Item number five, accepting a resignation of Patricia Olson, the appointment of Mr. Coxworth. Ms. Gray, you want to talk to us about this?
Sure. So Ms. Olson had to resign for personal reasons, and we opened the seat in, for applications, and Mr. Coxworth is one who applied. And so he is recommended by several people in staff and myself to fill that seat.
Okay. Any questions?
Looks like he's very qualified.
Okay. All right. Well, that's our, that's our massive agenda for Thursday. So, I'm being facetious, obviously. I'm sarcastic, more. Next item on the agenda is the presentation for Better Bucks. Where's our superstar?
Pressure.
Take it away. Wow us.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for having me. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Scott Borkstead. I'm corporal with the Sierra Vista PD. I am the Public Information Officer and Community Resource Officer. So the Better Bucks program, as you well know, because it was a council objective, we were to research the feasibility of developing a voucher program and bringing it here to Sierra Vista to address the homeless population and the panhandling. Little bit of history about Better Bucks, which is the program we're, we're going with. It's started in Flagstaff. In 2013, Flagstaff was sued by the ACLU because they were enforcing an old statute on the books regarding panhandling. Basically, it said if you're standing on the street corner, holding a sign, begging for money, that would be illegal. The ACLU's contention was, this is freedom of speech. They won. So panhandling basically became legal. But there continued to be issues throughout the city of Flagstaff. Business owners complaining that panhandlers were harassing customers at storefronts as they go into businesses. Citizens felt basically accosted by these aggressive panhandlers, general fear and mistrust of what was going on. Plus, there was no organized program or treatment to address the mental health or addiction issues. What is Better Bucks? Well, it was designed to provide donors an opportunity to give directly to panhandlers without compromising their sense of social responsibility. Providers, it provides panhandlers with a list of social services. The cash vouchers are used for living essentials at local businesses. Basically, food, non-alcoholic beverages, toiletry, clothing, pet food, items like that. There's also a job service coupon in the booklet and a one-day bus pass to provide access to those services. How it works is citizens will purchase the Better Bucks booklet for six bucks. There are five $1 vouchers inside to purchase the living essentials. The extra dollar goes towards printing costs. The receipt for the Better Bucks participating stores, I'm sorry, receipt of Better Bucks goes to participating stores to use the vouchers. They have to be as close to the dollar amount as possible. So in this example, you have $9.50 worth of product. It's gonna take 10 Better Bucks to purchase that product. The store will then take the receipt, staple it to the Better Bucks coupons, and then once a month, submit it to the Better Bucks Sierra Vista organization and then be reimbursed dollar for dollar for the product purchased, as long as they're legitimate purchases. The individual gets no change on the product. That change would go back into the Better Bucks program to help fund it. Pretty much, going through that. This is a mock-up of what our booklet is gonna look like. I have a hard copy here if you want it. Be Sierra Vista Better Bucks, or Better Bucks Sierra Vista, with our sponsors on there. Obviously, the police department, city of Sierra Vista will be on there. You can see, we received a donation from the Russell's Law Firm, which got them on the front of the cover. The next page or back page of this would have local service providers on it. This is what the voucher will look like. The front of it is on top. The bottom would be the back of it, explaining that food, non-alcoholic beverages and toiletries and clothing could be purchased. We'll also have a service provider page. That's update. And of course, the city of Sierra Vista is gonna follow the, the Flagstaff example and offer a free bus pass to those individuals, a one-day bus pass to use. Of course, we had to look at other options of, of the program before we submitted this. We could require the, the panhandlers to get a solicitation permit. The problem with that is it's trying to address the problem through law enforcement only, and it just doesn't work. These folks don't have the money to pay fines after they get arrested and that type of thing. So, and it doesn't offer any social service recommendations to them either. Modify the environment. We kinda did this a little bit over at Safeway. If you remember, a couple of years ago, they used to have the benches and tables out front. I got a call from the manager there saying they had an issue with folks sitting there and harassing the customers for money as they came in, so he wanted recommendations. I said, get rid of the tables and chairs. He did that, and the next day, the problem went away. So it does work in a limited capacity. Regulating alcohol sales. This is somewhat difficult, especially with individuals who are professional alcoholics, as we call them. It's very hard to tell if they're intoxicated. There is a law on Arizona books, basically, that says you cannot sell alcohol to someone who is obviously intoxicated. Hard to tell sometimes, especially with, you know, clerks working register, whether or not this person's intoxicated or not. We can provide all the services, social services to them. Fontana, California does that. However, it's very expensive, just probably not feasible. Change the Way You Give program. This isn't in Chandler. It's also throughout other cities in the United States. They have an app, and it's designed, as you drive by, if you see someone that's homeless, to go to this app, donate money, and then they send folks out to these homeless folks and try and get them to seek services. Kinda come up with an idea of a variation of this with the Better Bucks program, where someone could go in and donate directly to Better Bucks through an app. They could even, hopefully, the way we work it out is pick a service provider that they want that donation to go to. In other words, the service providers that will be listed on the booklet will be provided voucher booklets to entice people to come in and seek their services. Come on in and, and fill out the, the forms we need to get you into housing, and we'll give you a booklet. Make this appointment. We'll give you a booklet. So that's the concept behind this, the Change the Way You Give app is organizations can go on to this, or individuals can go on to this app and say, hey, I wanna delegate my funds to go to, say, Good Neighbor Alliance, or whatever's listed on there. Actually, working with Dimitri Simonton, if anybody's familiar with him. He has a company that kinda designs these things. He works with the Legacy Foundation. And he's, he said that he'd be willing to work on this for us. Or we could create our own voucher program. When I submitted this up the chain of command, I basically said, why change the wheel? It works up in Flagstaff. It works very well. They've done all the legwork, know the shortcomings, and have overcome them. And they're gonna help us out with that. So that's why we chose to go with this program. With the implementation, we created a board of directors, Better Bucks Board of Directors, to include merchants, police, government agencies, faith-based, nonprofit organizations. There's a list of our directors right there. The board then established requirements for a nonprofit that would be interested implying to manage the program. The application process was February through March, February 1st through March 1st. We had one nonprofit submit an application. However, it was a very good application. So our board chose to go ahead and go with that organization. When I called up the individual that submitted the application, they told me, well, I did this without board approval. They've got some questions. So I attended their board meeting, and they had no clue about what I was talking about and was informed that that individual was no longer with that organization. So basically, that application became null and void. However, our board of directors wanted to make sure we moved ahead with this anyway. So we basically decided, we're gonna move forward, we're gonna get the funding, we're gonna get the program set up, and then, after it's all ready to go, have another application process to seek, you know, a 501(c)(3) to run the program. Here are some of the agencies, the service agencies that have committed to be in the booklet. The Goodwill Job Connections was just added today. Which is pretty cool. They're excited. So what do we need? Startup funds, basically somewhere between $10,000 to $15,000. Our board of directors has filled out grants with the Legacy Foundation, Arizona Community Foundation. They announce next Monday. We've also filled out applications with Long Realty, a defense contractor, NCI, and Costco. That is new as of this week as well. We've also accepted, gotten donations from our Citizens Police Academy associates. It's pretty impressive. They donated $500. FOP donated $500. The Police Officers Association donated money as well, and of course, the Russell's Law Firm. Citizens in general, it's pretty impressive. Very proud of the Citizens Police Academy associates, because when I made the pitch to them, they were saying, yeah, this falls within our charter. The police are involved. We'll donate $500. I then took in an additional $600 from individuals at that meeting that night. So it was pretty, pretty impressive, so. And also, the city of Sierra Vista. And also, the purchase of Better Bucks vouchers.
I give you a word of warning, since you don't have a 501(c), you're not a 501(c)(3) organization. Make sure somebody's double-checking you on the, on the cash, because that keeps your rear end from being in trouble, okay? I know you're straight. You're doing it right.
Yep.
But make sure somebody's over-shouldering and checking on you, so you, you have two people to say, it's, it's good to go.
I'm gonna cover that right now.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So the way that we started accepting the money for this is we partnered with the originating nonprofit up in Flagstaff, the Shadows Foundation. They're acting at this moment as our fiduciary for that. So through board meetings and us doing all of this work, it was brought up as, why don't we just form our own 501(c)(3)? And we are in the process of doing that. We have a board meeting tomorrow. We have all the paperwork filled out. And I think the board will vote tomorrow to just move forward and form the Better Bucks Sierra Vista nonprofit to manage the program. So support, we're gonna need some volunteers when we get going with this. The distribution of vouchers, the Rangers have offered to do that. We're gonna need trainers for the merchants and the Better Buck recipients. I think that will be me primarily, going out and make contacts and say, hey, here's how this program works. We'll need sign holders. We'll get to that. And help reconciling the receipts on a monthly basis. And basically, just promoting the program in general. So this is something they do up in Flagstaff. If they have a particular area that is, they have a lot of panhandling going on, they send their volunteers out with signs like this. And basically, just to stand there, draw attention to it, and get people to ask, well, what is Better Bucks? If they don't know already. And then they can direct them to go to the website to purchase the, the products there, the Better Bucks right there. This is a mock-up of one of the flyers that will be coming out. Something our board recognized very early on is this program isn't just for homeless or panhandling. There are a lot of needy individuals, a lot of needy families in Sierra Vista. And there, our focus will be to promote it, to give to anybody in need. And as you can see, it says here, a better way of giving a compassionate solution. And the blacked-out area is a compassionate solution to panhandling. That's the Flagstaff version. Our version is gonna be a compassionate way to help those in need. And that's the theme that we're gonna go with throughout the forms that we have, the, the booklets and, and that type of thing. On the right side, it says, want to give Better Bucks? Pick up Better Bucks for $6 at the following businesses or locations. We're hoping that some of the city facilities will be willing to sell the Better Bucks. City Hall, the library, the PD, any other suggestions? We, we have people asking for them now. I took a phone call today from a gentleman from a church saying, hey, our church wants to buy some to pass out to their congregates. And unfortunately, we just don't have them ready just yet. So it's getting a lot of support throughout the community. Just lost my train of thought. We have a launch date. We're pretty much committed to this, to be October 1st. What we'd like to do is have a booth at Art in the Park and start selling the booklets at Art in the Park. I've already talked to the organizers of that organization, and they're willing to have us come in and do that. So that's the tentative idea, or tentative plan to, to launch the program. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I have one. I noticed here on that slide that you had before the questions. No, not that one. There you go.
There you go.
It says that Better Bucks will be allowed to use up to $10 at participating. Why is there a limit as to what you can spend?
Okay.
Because $10 doesn't go very far.
You're absolutely right. In fact, get it right, this is a mock-up, okay? This, this basically just has our logo in it right now.
Okay.
We haven't moved forward, because we'll probably change out the Shadows Foundation logo there and put ours in there, that type of thing. And that's a great question. And in fact, our board realized that, too. 10 bucks is the limit in Flagstaff.
Okay.
Our board is going to make the limit $20 in Sierra Vista.
Okay. That makes it much more fungible as far as somebody who needs things. And, you know, maybe you'll accumulate these Better Bucks from a couple of people and say, hey, it's time to go shopping.
Yes, absolutely. And the other thing, too, is they can be used in conjunction with cash or EBT.
Right.
Of course, the merchants have, have got to be trained. You gotta take the cash or the EBT first to show that transaction, and then the Better Bucks come off after that.
Have you done any research with respect to what retailers will take this?
Yeah. Yeah. Actually, I have a copy of the Flagstaff Better Bucks booklet, and inside their booklet is a list of vendors, and we'll have the same thing on our booklet. In Flagstaff, they have Fry's Food, Bashes, or Food City here. It's also in Prescott Valley. They have Walmart included with that, and then local organizations as well, you know, smaller businesses, food stores, that type of thing. I have approached Safeway, Fry's, Food City, Walmart, Target, and explained the program to them. They have the information. Of course, it has to go up to corporate to get approval. But Fry's and Bashes should be an easy sell, because they're already in the program, and they actually have barcodes for those stores on the booklet.
Okay.
So that should be an easy one. I was at a chamber event at the mall. Went there with my wife, just to, you know, support her, and I got hit up by a bunch of folks about this. And there was a gal from the Friends of the Sierra Vista Library, and called me by name. I didn't know who she was, because I've heard about your Better Bucks program. And she says, can the Friends of the Sierra Vista Library be one of the merchants? And she told me a story how during the pandemic, this gal comes in, virtually no money, you know, for entertainment or anything, but she had enough money to buy a book or two. And they thought, wouldn't it be great if the Friends of the Sierra Vista Library could accept Better Bucks? You know, presented it to our board, and they said, yeah, that's a great idea. So we've got one merchant for sure on board, and it's the Friends of the Sierra Vista Library.
Yeah. And another comment I have, you mentioned that that Better Bucks logo is trademarked. Do we have to pay?
No.
No. Okay.
Now, we don't have to pay for the trademark part of it. We are going to, part of the money that we need, we are going to pay Vicky Burton a consultation fee for the first year. She'll actually come down to Sierra Vista for a week, as much as we need in that week, to help out getting things set up, and then basically be on-call 24/7 if we have a question or concern, if we run into a problem.
Okay. My last comment is, we have a farmer's market every Thursday in Veterans Park, which would be an ideal place for people who are doing shopping that are socially conscious, because a lot of people are. They go to the farmer's market to purchase these Better Bucks. So I would make that suggestion if you haven't thought of it already.
I'm sorry, to have, like, have a booth there?
A booth there, yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, not a bad idea. That's, when you said the farmer's market, the farmer's market in Flagstaff actually participates in the Better Bucks program, and they accept Better Bucks through the farmer's market.
There you go.
I don't know how they do that with a receipt, because they're independent contractors.
Well, some of the people that sell at the farmer's market accept the welfare money from the state as well. So some people already know how to do it. It's a matter of...
The EBT, yes.
Getting that ironed out.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Great idea. All right. Thank you.
I have nothing else. I think it's a great thing. A lot of people are concerned about panhandling and the homeless population here in Sierra Vista, and I think this goes a long way to maybe preventing people from buying alcohol, using that money for drugs, using it for cigarettes. It's a great job.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Scott.
I think it also, people who hesitate to give money to them may be more willing to help through this program.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate all the work you guys are doing, especially you, because I've seen you present this a couple times, and you're doing a great job. So is this board. I had questions, but then later on, you answered them all, and those were great questions. Thank you.
Wait, have you got anything?
No, sir. Just everything I said. Thank you. It's a good program.
I just have one question and then a comment. So the expectation is that once we get rolling on this program, it will basically self-fund, right?
Correct.
Without needing, like, additional donations, but if so, we can go out for those through sponsorships, whatever. And then also, just like Carolyn said, I think we were both there the day that you did the presentation, and it was very well-received. And I think that the community, as our community does with a lot of things, will get behind it and be very supportive. So thank you for all your hard work.
You bet. It's been great.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things real quick, Chuck. And the first one's really for you. And this deals with the city's involvement. Obviously, we got individuals doing a stellar job for the community, standing before us, presenting today. But my understanding is, our initial contribution from the city is going to be about $10,000 in cash. Is that right?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have a few comments, and it folds into your question.
Okay.
So I'll try and combine them all into one. So the seed money that we've been asked for from the board is $10,000 to get the program up and running. So I met with Eva Tikkerson last week and went over that, and she was very happy. Of course, we already have it in the budget, so there's a $50,000 line, I believe it's in Matt's budget, to do this. But in the larger context, of course, we went through and studied the homelessness situation in Sierra Vista, and you all were briefed individually about that. And certainly, homelessness has many different facets associated with it. This is only addressing one of those facets. Obviously, Good Neighbor Alliance, you know, addresses shelter needs and that kind of thing. There are other facets also, and, you know, Chief is here. But clearly, the homeless situation, panhandling, is impacting particularly the police department in terms of the services, the number of calls. Chief, I forget what the percentage of calls were.
Couple bucks, I don't have those.
Don't we go through all of them?
No, just in general.
Okay, just since January of this year, I've been keeping statistics on the number of arrests that we've made throughout the city. And through May, the homeless population account for 21% of all the arrests that we make in Sierra Vista. That's a huge number compared to, if you compare it to the population of Sierra Vista. Depending on which way you want to go, based on the census of 2020, the homeless population equates to about .0013%. But we're making 21%. They're responsible for that much of the arrests. So it's a huge number.
And what I'm trying to get at is, you know, this started with a council goal set up in your last strategic plan, where we did the study and, you know, had the goal of creating this voucher-type system and using Better Bucks. You have another goal, of course, in your next strategic plan, to try and take this one step further. And I'm just using those numbers as an example of how the situation, while we're talking about small numbers of people, is really having an impact in terms of calls for service and actually costs to the taxpayers in terms of what they're dealing with. So right now, you know, we've been talking as a group, you know, about what is the next step? What is it that we can do that's cost-effective, that, you know, passes the test of common sense, and, you know, is a way that we can do it, you know, at arm's length, because we're not the experts in social services, you know, or homelessness. But there are a number of different groups in town. One thought I had, you know, which was in the budget, was to perhaps put out a contract for a single point of contact, so that the police department could have somebody to work with that could get them to the appropriate service, be it a job service, be it mental health, be it shelter, be it food, you know, whatever it is the issue, and there are a host of others. And we're not really far enough along yet to, you know, tackle that. But that, those are the thoughts we're having in terms of meeting your goal in the next iteration, in terms of what else can we do to help, you know, with the homelessness situation, without necessarily being the lead dog or creating a social service program to do that. So we have many groups in town that are very, very good and well-versed in working with people that want to help, including the Better Bucks Board. But, you know, probably right now, it's more prudent for us to start with this, try and have some success with this, and then build from there. But we have an issue, you know, and the numbers show that we have, that we do have an issue that needs to be addressed somehow in the future.
Corporal Borg said, do you have a breakdown on the types of arrests?
Yes.
Whether it be shoplifting or... That would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. For the month of May, for shoplifting and thefts, there were three. This is the homeless population now. Criminal trespass, 10. Drug charges, four. Warrants, four. Seven, sorry. And then other would fall in between there. I think there was a burglary in there, an assault, that type of stuff. There were five. And that's pretty indicative for every month. In April, shoplifting was three. Criminal trespass, nine. Drugs, 11. Warrants are 12. So we're seeing a theme between criminal trespass, drugs, and warrants. The hard part is getting these folks to get to their court dates. You know, we're working on other ideas for that, you know, to work with the courts, to entice these people to make their court dates, so they're not tying up resources again, you know, with officers and having to arrest them. And, well, now we can take them to Sierra Vista, but it used to be all the way to Bisbee for a year, so that was a pain.
Unfortunately, when we make arrests on criminal trespass or shoplifting, they also then fail to appear at their court dates, which then results in the warrants, which then translates into re-arrests. And then typically, that's where the drug possession comes in, is during a search and sent to arrest. And it just continues to snowball from there. So that's one of the other issues that we have to do, is work on getting them to court.
Yeah. I still haven't finished my own stuff, but go ahead.
Okay. I thought you were done.
Oh, I got one more thing.
So 21% arrest rate, how much do we have a percentage of the calls? Is it, every call equals an arrest? I'm hoping he can help me with that.
That I don't have. I don't have the percentage of calls.
We don't. We can get that number for you, based on his arrests, although there are many calls that we do not make arrests on.
Right.
So as an example, we get called for a criminal trespass charge over a call, say, at a Circle K, and they want the person trespassed. We trespass them, they move on their ways, tied up our officer during that time. So we'd have to go through and really look at those in particular. I don't know what percentage that is particularly. It is a pretty high percentage. We deal with it on a regular basis, though.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, unfortunate. And I know for a fact that, you know, the arrests are from homeless populations, because when I get the booking sheets on a daily basis, I can see, you know, their listed address or lack thereof. But on what you're asking for, we'd probably have to do research call by call by call. It'd be very time-intensive, yeah.
Yeah.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Chuck, I appreciate the fact that the city is looking at the next couple of steps, which obviously we need to do. And I think you're absolutely right. We need to look for a gatekeeper, if you will, to help with these services that's non-governmental. And that's going to be, that's going to be a bit of a chore, but again, we need to start looking now. I mentioned the seed money, the $10,000 cash to start with. So the other things I'm thinking about, what else can we do as a city that's appropriate to help launch Better Bucks, or whatever the next programs may be, is, Scott mentioned, people are on Facebook and all these other things, and if we could help create a webpage or other things to help publish.
Well, Mr. Mayor...
We need to pursue those efforts to get it, at least to get it launched. Once it's launched, we can decide if and when, and how much we're going to spend time on maintaining, and what, and who's going to be responsible in the future, and that kind of stuff. But that's kind of what, it wasn't covered. You're smiling at me, so I'm assuming you already got the answer before I asked the question.
Yeah, I do. We, yeah, our board, as Chuck knows, they're motivated for this. And in anticipation of the board voting to move forward to become a 501(c)(3), one of our board members, who has a lot of experience in that, has already created a webpage and a Facebook page.
Yeah, but what I'm suggesting is, the city, we need to either link or support it on our own network, our own outlets for information, so that we're integrated.
Well, as you can see, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Hector is here in the room, and she's well-aware of the need for the city to help promote the program to get it started. So we will certainly be, since we're already going to be a sponsor, we'll be, you know, in a position to help out.
Did you have something else?
Newsletter that we mail out.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah. I'm talking all media, but we'll do any good to help. Anything else for Scott? Yes, ma'am?
Comment. I just wanted to say, I think this is also a really good way, on top of the fact that you guys are doing a really good job. And what I neglected to say earlier is, I think this is a great way on top, in addition to the other programs that we have within the city. But Better Bucks is a way to offer dignity to those who aren't always offered dignity. So I think it's a very compassionate, humane way for us to try to help people. So thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
So I just want to thank you for your efforts, Scott. I know there's a lot of people, Chief, and a lot of members on the city staff that are helping you out, and the members of the community have stepped up. Obviously, you're going to have a lot of, there's already a lot of buzz out there on the street. You can get a lot of support. The challenge soon will be, how do we keep it focused on where we need it, and how do we move forward?
Absolutely.
So that's a good place to be in. So thanks for everything you're doing.
If I could finish with just one comment that I didn't during my presentation say. Couple council members have heard this. When I usually talk to groups about this, I explain to folks that this is not a government program, okay? It's sponsored by the city of Sierra Vista. But the problem that we have with the homeless population, panhandling, and those folks in need throughout the city, is a community problem. And that's why we have chosen members of the community to help out. So if you're talking with anybody about this program, or they ask you about it, I would ask you to please stress that point, that it's a community issue, and the community's taking an approach of trying to solve it. Thank you.
It's a private-public partnership.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Otherwise, it's not going to work, in my opinion.
Great job.
Thanks, Scott. Great job. Okay, well, we'll move on. Item number C is a report on recent trips, meetings, future meetings. I haven't been anywhere lately. I don't know anybody else that got anything. I'm not scheduled to go anywhere. I know we've got the...
We saw your picture in the paper, so we know you're somewhere.
Well, I was in town, yeah. The League of Cities has opened up the reservations for the meeting in August 1st to September.
August 31st.
August 31st. So if you plan on going, get your reservations in as soon as you can. And that's the only major thing that I see that's going to cause trips, meetings, future meetings. Ms. Assistant City Manager, do we have anything on your calendar?
Just your special budget work session, starting on Monday.
Okay. Special budget work session, starting on Monday. We're still going to have to do our item D, future discussion items. We still need to talk about the Economic Development Commission/Advisory Council/whatever we're going to come up with. So we need to have a discussion on that sometime in the future. I think after the budget, we need to sit down and look at the calendar and find out, what's a good date to basically have a, just a discussion on the way to do that. Chuck, I know you've been mulling this over, and you're coming up with options. When is a timeframe that you would feel comfortable, at least starting the discussion?
I imagine getting through the budget, obviously, pretty much will be done by the end of June. So we'll probably have some options available for you. I would say the August timeframe, if that's okay. If you all feel we need to try to move that up, we can. But I think August, we should have something.
Anything else on the council requests that are out there hanging?
None.
Chuck, anything from the staff?
Nothing else today.
Okay. I don't see anything else on the agenda, then, unless anybody has any comments. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.